To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is citizen concerns for anyone that would like to address the board on an item not already addressed on the agenda. Is there anyone? Hearing none. If you are watching by YouTube Live, you can reach us by telephone at 712-224-6014 at any time during the meeting. Move on to item two, which is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the September 1st meeting. Item four is approval of the claims. Item five from Board Administration is approval of lifting of tax suspension for initials LR. Item six from Human Resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, presentation of award certificate to Dawn Lefave. Is Dawn here? We certainly do thank her for her three gallons of blood donated. Every time they reach a mile, gallon milestone, excuse me, they get four hours of paid time off. Good job. Item seven from Community and Econo Development Director David Glaser is to receive the quarterly update on Simcoe membership activity with rural cities. This is the fourth year we've done this, where the county board funds 50% of Simcoe dues. We supported 10 cities this last year. Last cycle, less than $6,000 was spent, but it leveraged many more times, many more times the funding and grants and such. Anything to add to the consent agenda?
I'll move approval as consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddig. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We have two minutes before our 4:35 PM set time, so if we could, jump ahead to item nine from County Elections. This is under Mr. Hoffmeyer. Reaction to authorize the chairman to sign the Iowa Secretary of State Vote Safe Iowa Initiative Grant Agreement. Is there anyone to speak on this? No?
Nope.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Michelle, any filibustering on this? No? Any questions? Anyone has? No questions. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are at 4:34. We will begin discussing item eight A, which is our 4:35 PM set time. For action, this is a public hearing in sale of property parcel also known as 111 and a half 23rd Street. Is there anyone to speak for or against the sale of this property before bids are received? Are you here to speak for or against the sale itself?
For.
Okay. Would you like to give your name and address in your statement?
My name is Julie Lesko. I own 107 23rd Street. My home address is 2315 Grandview Boulevard in Sioux City, and my daughter and grandchildren reside at 107 23rd Street. And I am here to purchase 111 and a half, which connects to our property and is essentially my daughter's driveway and her access to her garage.
We've got 4:35. Any other...we can move on with the public hearing.
Yes, we are in the public hearing. It is 4:35. Did you have anything else to add?
Nope, just interested in buying it.
Okay. We'll get to that next. Anyone else to speak for or against the sale of this property? Sir or ma'am?
My name's John Brun. I reside at 2310 McDonald, which the easement lies to the south of that property. For decades, that property has been a 12-foot perpetual easement. Six feet of that 12 feet is the south side of my property. Six feet of lots, five, six, and seven, I believe it is, have the other six feet, which comes to 12. It is for the purpose of a alley to be used in common by the property owners of all four sites. My garage faces that easement. If it does not stay in easement, I have no access into my garage. I don't have room to drive the car in and out of it. There's a wall on the south side of the easement. Also, there's another garage on that easement that relies on that easement for access to their garage also. So I'm strongly in favor of keeping it as an easement. As you can see, otherwise I'll lose access to my entry and exit of my garage.
We're not looking to sell any part of the alley here. I'm trying to see. You said you're at 23...
10.
10.
McDonald, right.
Yeah, nothing that adjoins your alley either way is going to be sold.
It's on the easement, sir.
111 23rd Street is the parcel being sold? I'm gonna just look.
From our map view, it shows a couple cars actually on the north property of yours, which are able to pull into some sort of land on your existing...
It is, but that's in front of my garage doors.
What's that?
That's in front of my garage doors.
Okay.
The easement is to the south of those two cars, 12 feet, and I need that to back up and pull into the garage.
And you're...
I don't have enough room there.
And you're worried about a physical obstruction?
Yes. I cannot have that blocked or unaccessed in any way on that easement. If it's blocked, I don't get access to my garage.
Are you aware of any particular moves to block that access?
No. That easement has been there for decades. It's been there for over eight decades, I think. And I'm sure for a lot of reasons, it has outlived its usefulness. But there's still, there's two garages there that rely on that easement to get ingress and egress in and out of their garage. The 12-foot runs from McDonald Street east to the north-south alley, all along my south property on lot...what is that lot? Yeah, it doesn't show it on here. Anyway, it's 100 and some feet of easement, and it goes from McDonald Street east to the north-south alley behind there, where the two cars are parked. It's a 12-foot stretch there.
I wonder if the other...had this been bought before, and then people then paid their taxes on it, went back to the county? Because this would have been, if it was an easement, it would have been city property.
My understanding is the Woodbury County has the portion you are auctioning off today on their tax record. The rest of it, I believe, is private property, and those owning it are paying taxes. So that six-foot by 40-something that is being auctioned today is part of the easement, but I believe the county is not getting any taxes paid on that. I believe they're footing the bill for the taxes. That's my belief, my understanding. That's why they're auctioning it off.
Well, it's just interesting on that 107 23rd, that parcel's been all unified. But if you look at 101 23rd, that person owns that 12-foot already behind there. But at 111, it's still, it's in the county's hands, which doesn't make sense.
And I believe everything is accounted for tax-wise, except for the portion that's being auctioned off today. And I'm just requesting that be maintained and stay as an easement for obvious reasons when I get in and out of my garage.
Do you see the clearance from your garage would probably be, what, about 20 feet? Or, I don't know?
If I had the easement, yeah, it'd be roughly 20 feet. Without that easement, I got about eight feet. Eight, maybe 10. My car is 14-foot long.
That's okay. It's 12-foot from that line, from the tip of your garage to the line. It's about 12.
Yeah. And then the rest of it to the south is easement. That's my property line at 12 feet from my garage door south, where the two cars are parked, if you have that. But I need that easement to gain ingress and egress out of my garage.
Any other comments, sir?
Pardon me?
Any other comments?
No. Any questions? I'll...okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the sale of this property?
My name is Catherine Brun, and I live at 2310 McDonald Street. Some of my concerns are that we need to get on the easement to trim our bushes. There's like volunteer trees and weeds there we can't get to. There's an abandoned car there, fully on the easement. My garage opening faces south, so when it's winter and icy, we need to have the room of the easement to back up and pull our cars in there. It's kind of a tight spot. We've never parked on the easement, but I want maybe to postpone this while somebody could help us with the property owner at 107 23rd Street that has for many years had abandoned cars, fully on the easement. And I do believe they don't understand that we are not on the easement. We drive across it, but we do not park on it. So we'd like to get on there. I've been down to the office that has the plaques or the huge books, and they've told me that I have every right to be on the easement. So there's a mess there that I'd like to clean up. For 44 years, we've been mowing it and maintaining it ourselves.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Uh huh.
That 107, does that person access their garage through there too, then? That looks like?
They would drive through there.
If the car wasn't parked there?
Right, but they've had...this is the second car I know of that's just left unused on the easement, and it's fully on the 12-foot easement. So I'd like to address, you know, why that is allowed. We're kind of waiting for that car to be disposed of or something and so we can get in there and clear the weeds and volunteer trees that are winding their way through all of our bushes. So that's pretty much my issue, is accessing the garage when it's winter and maintaining the grounds there.
My understanding, Diane came over and talked to me about this and said that there is an easement on it. It's a perpetual easement. So if the property is sold, I don't think the easement goes away. Is that your concern?
Did you say the easement doesn't?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna guarantee that, but that's my understanding, is that the easement, it's a perpetual easement, and it goes with the property. So the easement remains intact. Is that correct?
Right. But what, how do you handle when somebody totally violates the easement and won't move the cars?
Well, that, you'd have to report that to somebody, and I think we'd probably, what, contact the sheriff and...or would we just go to the chief of police?
I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV. That's my understanding, is the easement goes with it, and I don't know what it would take to enforce that easement.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, the owner, the person living there says they're gonna build something there and put up a pole to block us. And so what I've been told is you can't build anything on an easement. It's supposed to be open to everyone. So...
Do you have a copy of the easement? Do all the parties understand the easement?
That's it. I don't know if, you know, it's 12 feet wide. It's been surveyed by someone who was a surveyor that lived there and built a garage. So we have a marker that we put in the ground showing how the easement is 12 feet wide. We're never parked on the easement. But yeah, here's the warranty deed that describes it as an easement somewhere. Yeah, it's here. This is the warranty deed for my house. We also have the one for the west side of it.
So the part that's for sale is the north six feet of that easement. So the southern six feet is already owned by the 11, 11 23rd Street?
Well, I was told that we own the six feet opposite the six feet that are for sale here today.
So, yeah. Okay. It's hard to say, because I don't see the line on there. Because normally, when the city vacates something, they offer up for sale six feet to one and six feet to the other, and I don't, so did...
Well, from visiting the...I don't know the name of the office here, but, you know...
The Recorder's Office. It's the Recorder's Office.
Okay. They've explained it to us that we own that six feet, the other six feet. And the yellow house, 111 and a half, own the other. But I don't know, why would somebody want to buy it and try to build something on it and put a pole?
You can't build something on it if there's an easement.
Right. That's my understanding, but there seems to be confusion in the neighborhood.
Could I see what they gave you, too?
It's not that you can, it's that you're not supposed to.
Because all I can see is, you know, the map and...
They have an easement at the end of my alley, and they put a fence up right after they got it.
Okay, I got that one, all right. I got that, too.
And this is the description of the easement.
Yeah, I'll read that.
Well, we're reviewing this. Could I ask if there's anyone else that would like, that's involved, that would address any of the comments made? An abandoned car, building access. Is there anyone else to speak? Would you like to provide some comment?
This has been an easement from the beginning of time, and it's still going to continue to be an easement. The way we worded the legal has a perpetual easement, which means that it lasts forever, no matter who owns it. So anybody in property owners right there will have access to that. The reason it got to the point where it is today is because years and years ago, that lot, that parcel used to be 110 feet. When it was conveyed to, I think, three owners ago, they only conveyed 104 feet. And then, so the new owner right now, he thought he owned it, but we went back on the deeds with Diane and the Recorder's Office, and it just got left off the legal description. So then got pushed out where nobody paid taxes on it, and that's how we obtained it.
Okay. Because otherwise, the county would never own this unless somebody hadn't paid taxes on it at some point.
Correct. It was an actual parcel with an easement on it.
So Heather, the easement just stays with it?
Yeah. And that's how my legal is currently worded on the resolution and will be worded on it quickly.
Right. So...
Regardless of who owns...
Yes, and that's recommendation has been from the county recorder, Diane, as well as Joshua from the county attorney's office. Also, Ingleson Abstracting looked it over, too, and we all agree on that.
Okay. Thank you. For our millions of YouTube viewers, that was Heather Satterwhite with the Board of Supervisors Office, providing insight. Anyone else to speak on the public hearing for or against the sale of this property? Hearing none. I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, Mr. Raddig.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I'll second it. But just to be clear, then, so it can be sold, whoever buys it has to maintain it as an easement.
Yes. Hearing no discussion on closing. Public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are now open for bids for the sale of this property. If you'd like to approach the microphone, give your name and address one more time and your opening bid.
My name is Julia Lesko. I reside at 2315 Grandview Boulevard, Sioux City, Iowa, and I own 107 23rd Street, Sioux City, Iowa. And I would like to open the bid at the minimum bid of, I believe it was 200?
199.
Okay, 199.
Anyone else to bid for this property? Going once, going twice. Move the property be sold for $199 to Julia Lesko.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Any documentation, Heather's there for you? We will now move on to our next set time, which was set at 4:37 PM. This is a public hearing in sale of property parcel also known as 4425 Central Street. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property before bids are received?
Can our, can we just verify with our sheriff's representative in the back that they can get somebody on that junk car in the easement?
I think it's the rest back. That's my son-in-law's car. His father actually owns the vehicle as the title. He is an independent contractor working in the fire department in Afghanistan right now. So if he gets back, then he can get the title to him. So the entitled car until then, he's not even a rightful partner on the city street. He should be done with his term in Afghanistan very soon. As soon as that happens, he gets the title, he's gonna get it like his own father. It is right now legally covered, and they actually have a separate report from the county. And now that we own the property and we know that we can actually access that without anybody coming out and hollering, trees coming down, it'll now be maintained as a right of ownership. That's all we wanted to board. No building. We can't use it if we put a building on any of them.
The downside of, you know, being a perpetual easement is that, you know, I still think it would follow then all city ordinances as far as blocking a space for so much time.
Yeah.
So...
It's basically just a path outside of their garage, is what it is. When they get out, that's where they need their turn to go up.
I can see it on the map, but if there is a car there, parked there, then it's essentially violating city law by being parked there too long.
Yeah. Now that this is all settled, this is what all...
Okay.
Anyone remember when I asked for comment on the abandoned car thing earlier? Mr. Raddig must have, you know, people more comfortable talking to you. We will continue with the public hearing on the other property. Is there anyone to speak for or against that sale before bids are received?
My name is Nicholas Rogge. I live at 500 Huntington Court in Sergeant Bluff. My wife, Amanda, and I, we own Helping Hands Preschool and Childcare next door to the property, and I'm for the sale. We'd like to purchase it to expand our business.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else to speak in the public hearing portion?
Seeing no others, I'll move a close of public hearing.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We're now open for bids on this property. Anyone like to approach the microphone and state their opening bid?
My name is Amanda Rogge. What's the address?
Same address?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, address, if it wasn't stated already.
500 Huntington Court, Sergeant Bluff.
And your opening bid?
I believe it's 447.
Thank you. Anyone else like to bid?
Chris Shaffer, 4421 Harrison, 600.
Thank you.
We'll go up another 100, 700.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want, just stay right up there.
I'd just go like 900, pound, 15, 200.
Or 200 or 2,000?
210s or...
2,500.
Okay, that's what I thought.
2,500.
3200.
3500.
Anybody else out there that was just waiting to get the last bid?
Yeah. Seeing none.
Move the cell to the Roggies for 3,500.
I'll second the motion by Raddig. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Now move on to item 10 for emergency services. Director Gary Brown includes A for action. Approve Woodbury County Emergency Services to purchase 10 sets of new turnout gear and two racks from MES for $22,830.
Good afternoon, Gary Brown, Woodbury County Emergency Services. We had three quotes on the gear, basically the exact same gear, and we went from a high of 28,573 to MES's bid, which we were recommending for 22,800.
What did we think we were gonna be around? Was it 28 or 25?
I thought we were gonna be closer to 25.
Okay. And then the racks are, that's basically where you're gonna store your equipment?
Yeah, store them. With this gear, you gotta keep it dry, so it's gotta hang in the rack that's got air movement around it.
Okay.
Yeah. You can't hang it on a wall anymore. It's gotta have air movement around it.
Okay.
The motion by Potabom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raddig. Discussion or other questions?
Just glad to see you come in less than expected.
Hearing no other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Again, we had quotes ranging all the way from 49,500 to the 44,764. The Jensen bid will meet our needs, met the specifications, and we're recommending the purchase of that. Now that is just a truck. We've got 53,000 budgeted, and we will need that to equip the truck. Rather than pay the dealer to do stuff, we do some of it ourselves, and then we hire some of it installed, like the emergency lighting, we'll hire that down in the lathering.
I'll move the approval of the 44,764 to Jensen Ford.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Potabom. So the estimated expense of 7850 is going to be from where?
CIB.
Okay.
We'll, we'll need the 53 to, just the 47 for the truck plus to get it equipped and get it in service. Then we'll take the one that's currently being replaced, and that will replace an older vehicle. So that's the way we do it. We get rid of the oldest one and then try to get as much good out of them as we can, put it in the lower use.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Passes four one. DeWitt opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 11 from Board Administration, Dennis Butler for action includes A, approval of resolution approving the site of the new Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center.
Dennis Butler with the Board of Supervisors. On this resolution here, it's required by Chapter 342.27. It gives a legal description of the exact property where the authority will be purchasing, but this has to go through the Woodbury County Board and the City Council and authority. City Council and authority will have theirs on probably next week on the 14th. So this is just describing the property, but it's a legal requirement we have to do. So I request to pass the resolution.
I move the resolution.
Second. Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approval of resolution to consider and approve an amended and restated 2080 agreement between Woodbury County, Iowa, and the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority for the payment of certain design, engineering, testing, and project management fees for Law Enforcement Center. We've been here before. Can you explain why we're here again?
We're here again because there was a week delay in our process to get the bonds processed through our underwriters and our bond sales because of the storm down Des Moines. When they had that, they were without power for a week. In our case, our particular attorney was without power for a week at their offices, so it got delayed a week, taking a little bit longer than realized. We're hoping to have the bonds and the money sold by October 26th is our goal. We had an S and P rating last Friday. We'll have the results of that hopefully at 2:30 next Monday. But in the process, waiting for the money, there are expenses being incurred by Baker Group, Goldberg Architects. We have to have a, we're doing some site testing on contamination, compaction, those kind of items there, so we're mending the agreement, or requesting to mend the agreement from 350 up to 1 million to be reimbursed shortly after the bond sale, October 26th, before we can get our money back the following week. As soon as the money's in the bank, I'll be back to the authority requesting that we're reimbursed for our expenses. We did run us through the County Attorney's Office, and they had several questions, and we did answer those questions. I conversed with PJ Jennings, and he agreed with what I had to say to him, a response to him. We had the changes made in the agreement here. That's pretty much it. There are some things needed to keep the process of the jail moving forward, to pay these people, so I did include a list, I believe was included there, a list of what we actually are paying, and they gave dollar amounts. It actually comes 8,000 more than what was approved for a million, but Baker Group said it'd be 100,000 less. They'll just hold off on billing to make it an even million, if it comes to that amount, when they actually get through with all their billing process for September and October. But we changed from just architectural design, certain designs, to engineering, testing, and project management costs. So we changed what we're paying for and the dollar amount from 350 to 1 million, which will be reimbursed within 60 days. That was one of the comments by the County Attorney's Office, it was very legitimate, it's a reasonable time. We did put a time on 60 days, but as soon as we get the money, we'll be there the first week or two, getting our money back. And it's paid out general basic fund, cash on hand.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Potabom. Any other concerns anyone has or that was brought up? This should be the last one?
I certainly hope so.
Not an answer.
Yes. How about you?
All right.
This will be the last.
It's a unique setup we have, and there's been delays, so certainly understandable that...
And we're kind of a template for the whole state through this whole process, because a project this size with joint authority hasn't happened in Iowa, so we're making all Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And this will be before the authority for their approval next Monday.
Well, how much of this is due to the financial delays related to something like the pandemic, or, and how much of it is just, it would've happened anyway?
And they haven't, well, they had a week delay because of weather related, and the coronavirus has kept a lot of them out of their offices, so they've tried to be working out of home, which is difficult to do sometimes. But it's just a process, and our attorney's making sure, like I said, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and following very, very close.
That's better than the Ts being dotted and the Is being crossed.
Yes.
Hearing no other comments or puns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is approval of resolution requesting reimbursement from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund.
Okay, this was put on at the request of Matthew here to make sure we did have our resolution done by today, and it does qualify, it's up to reimbursement up to 1,307,000, $191.28. And I asked Rebecca to be here to kind of go through the process. I think we do have a conference call tomorrow on the policy or procedures for reimbursement.
Good afternoon, Becca Socknott, Woodbury County Emergency Management. So as part of the COVID-19, Governor Reynolds allocated $125 million for reimbursements for local governments. As we all know, we had all of our budgets done prior to any coronavirus impacts, so this is to help offset some of that. Of that 125 million, 25 million is the federal match, so 100 million is going to local governments, 40 million to counties, and then 60 million to cities. So even our smallest city in Woodbury County was allocated some funds. Each one of them had the opportunity to go through the process as well and sign a resolution if they were anticipating reimbursement. So like Dennis said, this is our first step in being able to apply for that reimbursement. Once we have this done, we also need to look at potential, if there's any other departments that need to apply for FEMA, public assistance reimbursement. And then the key thing with this is, is we can utilize 25% of our public health and public safety pay and benefits to match that for the reimbursement. So again, this is just the first step. Tomorrow, we have a meeting to kind of go through the rest of the process of what needs to be done. There was a training, what, August 18th for the initial, and there's another one again tomorrow afternoon that ISAC sent out, so hopefully we can get this process moving. The first project is for May 1st through, I believe, July. We have to have that submitted through the system by September 15th, and then there's other quarterly cycles if we need that. So this is for the entire amount that we were allocated, so that way we don't have to come back and do another resolution. We can just continue to submit the projects until we meet that match.
It's kind of crazy to think about the 40 million, but you divide it out by the 99 counties, all of a sudden it's only $404,000, so, but obviously, some counties like us will probably have a bigger need versus a county that has 2,000 people and three employees.
Correct. It was based off of per capita.
Did they have the whole chart that told how much each county was eligible for?
So this 1.3 is from that chart, right?
Correct. If you go out to the Iowa coronavirus site, you can actually click on the link for local reimbursements. You go all the way down, you can type in whichever city or county in Iowa and find out what they were allocated.
And the call tomorrow is to figure out the details on how to, you know, substantiate the request and break down the cost.
It was a technical questions on actually submitting it.
Okay.
The initial one actually walked through the spreadsheets of putting in an employee and their pay rate, and then how it calculates the benefits, so it automatically does all that for you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item 12 from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nara includes A for action, approval of $15,000 funding support requested for seven-foot trail along Christie Road, also by request of Dan Hizerote of Overlook Developers LLC. Who's gonna talk first?
I'm just gonna let Dan make his presentation. That's really the first step is to, two-part agenda item. Sure. Hi, Dan Hizerote, 1969 Elk Creek Road, Sergeant Bluff, Iowa. Thanks for taking time to review this request today. Not sure if you had a chance to review all the information, but basically, I am working with a group to complete a trail that currently runs along Christie Road and ends by Overlook Lane, which is all on city property. Right now, it's basically a trail to nowhere. It goes up the hill and stops, and needs to continue on through county property over to Southern Hills Drive in order to link in to some of the trail systems that are gonna be developed there in the future. So the total proposed footage, I think you probably have all that in the summary, but there's quite a bit of area that's being added, requesting permission for the right-of-way permit, as well as the county's participation in helping this project come to light and to work. There's multiple parties that are donating time and resources and funds to make this all happen. The city is Sioux City. We meet with them for their blessing next week. It's on their agenda item, I think, to review as well, but everything that I've heard has been very positive comments on their side as well to help contribute towards this also.
What sort of continuation of trail can you speak to?
In the future?
Yeah.
Addition? Well, right now, it'll take it from Fleet Farm then up to Southern Hills Drive. Kind of a side topic is, we're working with, there's a Baptist church on the corner up there, and we're working with them also to run it along their property, connect in to the, to the west where their extension office is, so that would be completed. And then, I can't really mention the company, but there's a foundation that's looking at taking it from that corner as well by the Baptist church and running it south all the way down to Singing Hills, which then would tie into Singing Hills Trail. So hopefully, we can at least get it up to that point and then run it along the Baptist church property to tie that in. And then from there, next year, if the funds are available with this group, they'll continue it on then to the south as well, and I think that's on county ground also, so I'll probably be back again to visit with you about that piece. Roughly, the request is about, you know, the total project based on the city's calculations in the past is about 140,000 to 150,000. I think we're gonna come in a little bit less than that, so the request for the county's participation is about a little less than, a little more than 10% of the total cost that would be spent to make this trail happen.
It's kind of interesting, because when I was on City Council, this is actually a trail that was discussed about potentially even going further out into the country, or maybe going up towards Whispering Creek, like around that new housing unit that's up on the hill past Fleet Farm, so...
It does go up to Summit now, those apartments on the top, and I've seen some sketches too, where it shows it going on further east and tying into Whispering Creek, I think is the long-term plan.
And a lot of that land in the future, again, will be out in the county, because most of that is county land between there and Whispering Creek. And I think, you know, the city's put a lot of money into trails, and actually through Simcoe, I know a lot of resources have been put into trails. And it never really makes sense to have a trail that just kind of goes up and ends, and then, like in that corner there, you know, last thing you want to do is stick a bunch of bikers right there on that corner, up and down a hill, and I just think it would make sense to be a partner in this and complete this project.
Did the city intend this in the future?
What's that?
I said, do you think the city intended this in the future?
Ah, I think they did intend to have this part complete from there to there. It's just that the city doesn't own it, and it's not in the city limits and...
Got it. Do you foresee any future, I mean, you've already asked, and you know, you're going before other entities, but is there need after this from other groups?
The city has agreed to maintain it, which I know is a big question, but we have email support on that, that they would maintain this section and take care of the lawn care and snow remove and all that piece going forward in the future. The other piece to note is, there's a rest stop proposed on the corner there, where I kind of noted. And I don't know if you've seen out, like Riverside Park, Shields has a little pump station and has some tools and stuff on it, so on that corner, we'd be putting something like that back off the right-of-way ways. There's 70-foot of right-of-way there, so there's quite a bit of space, but Shields is one of the donors on this project as well that is helping to put that little rest stop there, which is kind of a nice little feature to have on a trail. So I would think, you know, I don't think there's gonna be any other requests for more dollars for this section, but definitely, as we go to the west, I think another group which I'll be part of as well will try to work on that next piece, to see what we can do there going forward too.
Now, further west, though, that's all city limits, correct?
Further west is correct, and we'll work on that, yeah. If I might have misspoken, further south, along Lakeport Road.
And even south, if it ends up on the west end of the street, that's all in the city?
No.
Oh, is there one parcel?
South is ours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, if you go, it looks like, if I'm looking at the map correctly, south along the churches is in the city, but once you break, the church's property goes back to county again, until you get down to Singing Hills Drive.
City limits jogs around everybody utilized.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought that, yeah.
Any other questions for Dan?
Where were we taking the funds from on this again? Was this coming out of Marks?
No. It is not the Secondary Road Fund Department's proposal to take that out. The board is free to do that, you are the boss.
Right.
But what I would remind you is that we derive all of our property tax revenue from our rural taxpayers, who would not see quite the same benefit in this trail, would rather see that money put toward even minor projects on the gravel road system. So it's not my recommendation we take this out of our fund any more than it was when we had the request last year to extend the trail down to Singing Hills. If you remember, we did have a young lady send us a...
Oh, yes.
Request for that. We did a cost estimate on it for extending that. I think we were looking at the east side because we had fewer utility entitlements. And if memory serves, that was around $175,000, some of which may or may not be eligible for grants, but currently, our MPO, which is where this would lie, has all of its money spent out to 2024. So I think it's noteworthy that Dan has gone out and collected a good deal of the funding this project where they're just asking the county for 10%. I would sooner not see that come out of the Secondary Road Fund.
Okay, Dennis?
Gaming. We do have about 150, 160,000 unallocated.
And we thought that was gonna be worse, didn't we?
Yes. We had estimated we were in about 28,000 a month back after the closure. First month, we got 230 more, second month, we got about 6,000 more. So can you process that, free up some more money for the board to have available for projects like this?
I'll move the 15,000 from Gaming.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
So we can use that process to create up some more money for the board to have available for projects like this.
I'll move the fifteen thousand from Gaming.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Good luck with the others, Dan. Moving on to item B, this is to approve the permit to work in the right-of-way for Overlook Developers. It was just with us and is still with us.
Yes. This is for the permit to work within the right-of-way. Again, I, I appreciate the, the outside group that is putting all this work together on the project and recommend approval of the permit to allow them to do.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Potabom. Hearing no other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Item C is to approve the federal aid project agreement for Project Aaron One Forty-four.
This project is to replace the pavement on Port Neal Road from approximately the north end of the rest area property the DOT has, all the way down to the north end of the Geleda property. That segment's still a, an old six-inch PCC pavement. I think it was done in the nineteen forties with about four inches of asphalt overlay and almost no shoulders. Our proposed plan for the project is to replace that with a twenty-four-foot wide, nine-inch-thick pavement with eight-foot shoulders on both sides. We were allocated two million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the MPO to assist us in doing this project.
I will.
Likely, we're going to be looking at about six hundred, eight hundred thousand of county F M funds to assist with that.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Item.
Requires the signature of the auditor as well, so.
Item D is to award the quotes for two new hitch-mounted mowers to Titan Machinery for a net price of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars.
We currently have one disc-style mower that's mounted off a three-point hitch on one of our smaller tractors that we use to allow all of our blade men to get around and mow on the gravel roads. This helps us get those weeds knocked down ahead of winter so that we can maybe not have quite as much drifting on that gravel road system. We'd like to have a second one of those mowers. Our proposal is to trade our current mower, which is wearing out and not the optimal type. It's currently a disc mower. We have a lot of trouble with the bearings, because when you've got something that's always on a slope pointed down, the upper bearings tend to dry out, which is where we have trouble with that style of mower. This mower is a rotary mower powered off the three-point hitch. We think it'll be a much more durable type unit for this. It was not the cheapest unit we priced. Again, the disc mower was our, our less costly choice, but we think this one will be more durable and more trouble-free for departmental use. And again, we're recommending two so that we can make the full brown on the gravel roads ahead of winter.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item thirteen is reports on committee meetings. Any committee meetings to report on?
We've got to look back.
We're going to wait for Raddick to look up his, in his phone if he's had any meetings. In the meantime, anyone else have any meetings?
Say Mark. Wait one minute. Just hang around just a minute if you would, please.
We had our.
Hang around just a minute?
No problem.
Thank you.
So we had our MPO Policy Board meeting discussing a lot of projects. And I just wanted to kind of share some of our discussion with the DOT. One of the amazing things, of course, most people notice there's quite a bit less construction on I-29. That's amazing. But a lot of people remember a bridge over the Perry Creek conduit. And there was a fire under that bridge. There was a lot of discussion in the past over what should be done there. And we do feel as though the DOT will be moving forward with fencing that all off so that people don't get down there in the future. So I think as taxpayers, we appreciate them doing that. I hate to see that blocked off for another six months or a year with another million dollars spent because somebody lit their stuff on fire underneath the bridge again. That's what I wanted to report.
Thank you. Any other reports? Item fourteen, any citizen concerns again? How many people we got on the phones, Andy?
Zero on the phone, we've got about ten watching the screen.
Wow, that's like a record.
It is a record. Still a little bit below our one million estimate for this meeting. All right, item fifteen, board concerns. Someone have a, someone have a question for, for?
I just got to think we're working on.
Any more concerns? No board concerns. Thank you, we are adjourned.